Well, you said it's time to start. Sorry that I wasn't ready.
All right, the Tuesday, September 17th, 2024 meeting of the Eden Prairie City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its own right.
Before I make an announcement about open podium, I just wanted to say that September 17th, 2024 is also, across the nation, National Voter Registration Day. A reminder for all of us here in Eden Prairie, not only to get out and register. However, in Minnesota, we do have same-day registration, so you can go in on Election Day. When you're actually voting, you have to bring forms of some type of identification, I'm sure, but you can go in and register that day. However, talking about early voting, here in Eden Prairie, early voting starts this Friday, September 20th. I believe right here in this chamber, Mr. Getchow. And so you can come in in person. There's also, if you go out online with Minnesota State Secretary of State's office, you can find ways to also vote by mail. So just encouraging everybody across our city to vote, to register, to get involved. If you so desire with campaigns, just to be part of our democracy. You'll see a lot of people with signs out. It's, I find it invigorating, not everybody does. Not everybody likes campaign signs, but I think it's a wonderful part of our American democracy. With that, I want to read an open podium invitation. Open podium is an opportunity for Eden Prairie residents to address the city council on issues related to Eden Prairie City Government. These open podiums occur prior to each council meeting. The council meetings typically are the first and third Tuesday of every month. Open podiums occur from 6:30 to 6:55, right here in the council chamber. If you wish to speak at open podium, please do contact the city manager's office at 952-949-8412 by noon of the meeting date with your name, your phone number, and subject matter, so we can be better prepared for you. Open podium is not recorded or televised. If you have questions about open podium, please do contact the city manager's office. Mr. Getchow, we have a presentation. Should I turn it over to you or go right to Amy Merkel?
Right to Amy Merkel.
Take it away, Amy.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we want to show our appreciation for the third quarter donations that we've received in the Parks and Recreation Department. We have four donations. We have one $5,000 donation through Comcast and the Crime Prevention Fund for our annual safety camp. We received a $10,000 donation from Elaine Sampson for the Art Center, $150 from Culvers for the Senior Center Garden Party, and lastly, a $250 donation from the Prairie School of Dance for the Movies in the Park and Harvest Halloween programs. And all of the donations in this quarter will be used primarily for the Art Center and for special events. And overall, they'll bring down the cost to participants. Though also, the funds will be used to enhance the events and lessen the burden overall to taxpayers. But we're very appreciative to all the donations and the support from the community, so thank you.
Thank you, Amy. And I say this, we say this every time there are these donations, that tax dollars just can't do everything, and the donations from these very giving entities help our tax dollars go further, so we really appreciate them. I also want to comment that there's some repeats on here. Comcast has been just a wonderful, incredible partner through the years. I believe they've given to the safety camp for years and years and years, $5,000 each time, as well as other donations through the year. And then the Elaine Sampson family has, beyond donating and being part of the initial building when we received it, also has been very giving, year after year of money that's gone to kilns and various infrastructure within the Art Center. So deeply, deeply appreciated there. And I've seen Culver's name on here in the past, and I believe I've seen Prairie School of Dance. So just really nice that these entities are regular participants in the work that we do as a city. So thank you, thank you, thank you. Council, is there a motion to basically accept these donations in resolution form?
Aldapa Resolution Accepting Multiple Third Quarter 2024 Donations to Parks and Recreation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right. The pass is unanimous. Okay, approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything, council member reports, any additional agenda items? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Minutes, unless you have edits or corrections, which cut in here. But if not, if someone could make a motion to approve both of them. But are there any additions or edits or corrections? Okay, could I have a motion for both?
Move to approve the following, following city council minutes. Council Workshop held Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. City council meeting held Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, pass is unanimous. Moving to the consent calendar for anyone fairly new listening in from home or sitting here tonight. Consent calendar typically are fairly rudimentary, basically housekeeping items that we clump together in one large motion. But council, you are able and freed to remove any if you have questions about any, and we can even vote on them separately. Anyone have any issues or questions with anything on the consent calendar? There's some interesting items on there, there's a lot, A through M. But in reading through them, I was intrigued by several of them. The encroachment agreement, I want to someday chat about that more. And just looking at the landscaping installation, I thought that was interesting, a town center place, et cetera. But anyone have any item, yes, go ahead.
I'd just like a clarification on L. Authorized lease agreement with the Eden Prairie School District for use of locker room space at community center. I'm anticipating this probably has to do with the hockey program. Am I right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that's just all I want to know. Thank you.
All right, if there's no further questions or discussion, could I have a motion to approve consent calendar items A through M?
Move approval of items A through M on the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, pass is unanimous. All right, Mr. Getchow, we have one public hearing this evening. I'll throw it back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. We do, we have a development, a redevelopment project, actually. A redevelopment project in the town center area. Told Development Company is proposing to redevelop the current Office Depot site at 11609 Leona Road. So you've got the 11,500 square foot Office Depot. About 11,500 square foot of the office building will be demolished to accommodate a new commercial tenant, which would be Planet Fitness. The remaining remodeled building will then be 18,500 square feet. In the northwest corner of the site, there is also proposed to be a new drive-through Starbucks. And then, not part of this approval, but you'll see in the packet, there is also the potential for a separate and different retail use in the other corner of the lot. But that would need to go back through plan commission and city council, but it shows up as future retail. But the action tonight is for this development with these two retail uses on the Office Depot site. There are two waivers that are being requested with this planned unit development site plan review, and they're related to the impervious surface, which is an existing condition, obviously, as you think about the Home Depot lot, and a front yard setback along Leona for Starbucks. And I think that's to accommodate the flow of traffic and for better traffic flow. But you will hear about that from the applicant. They are here to provide a presentation and an overview of the project. You have a public hearing, and then the developer, applicant, and staff can answer any questions that the council or the public may have.
Before I call forward, can you just explain quickly the variance on the impervious surface? Only because it's currently impervious surface, and so by putting a building and parking around it, that does not add any additional impervious surface. It's just that the building itself kicks in that requirement to lessen impervious surface somehow? Go ahead.
Mayor, members of the council, when the original site was developed, the city did not have shoreland ordinance requirements in place. The impervious surface requirement is triggered by the shoreland ordinance. So it was built at a time when this standard didn't apply. Now that we're going back through the process, we want to memorialize the fact that it does exceed what our current code allows for.
Excellent, thank you for the explanation. All right, proponent, if you would come forward and give your name and address and company and present.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Pleased to be here tonight. My name is Gary Drayer with Told Development Company, and we are located at 200 South Dale Center in Edina. Pleased to be here tonight to walk through our plans here for the redevelopment of Office Depot. So as indicated, we are looking to partially demolish one of the buildings and put a couple more uses on it. To start out, just to give you a flavor for the location, to be clear, the Office Depot building is located just south of the Best Buy, west of Cub Foods, and north of the mall, and Borders Flying Cloud Drive. These are the existing conditions. Office Depot was in the building for quite a long time. We purchased the building two and a half years ago with the anticipation that they were likely not to remain in the building. We would have liked them to, but, you know, based upon that size of a building, it didn't really suit their needs. So in purchasing it, I think you all know the condition of it. It was a little frustrating for the first couple of years because the maintenance, including the landscaping, was done by Office Depot and not us. So once they were out of there, we cleaned up some of the landscaping, but we're excited to move forward on the project and get the project looking shipshape. As indicated, the current Office Depot building is 31,000 square feet. We're going to have about 18,500 square feet remaining. As you can see from the site plan that is up, we're demolishing the east side of the building and putting a parking field in that location. In the northwest corner is indicated is going to be a Starbucks. And then the northeast corner is later for future development with additional retail tenants. You can see here the elevations for Planet Fitness. We're keeping the majority of the facade, but just cleaning up some of the trade dress. We're also adding glazing storefront to both the east and north sides of the building and just generally redoing the entire facade. We also will be re-roofing the building and just updating everything on the interior as well. So a great adaptive reuse of the majority of the building. The Starbucks elevations, as you can see, they tie in with the materials in the current building, but kind of give it a little bit of a modern flair. So we work with staff on that quite a bit and with Starbucks and our architect to come up with what we think is a really nice plan. The sustainability highlights on this, I think, you know, the fact, in addition to what you see up here, the fact that we're reusing a building that had good bones, but just needed some investment is always a good thing. We're doing extensive rework or additional work on the stormwater management system and doing things, including reuse of irrigation, and then a lot of work with some underground water storage and a number of storage rate quality and quantity controls. We're improving the pedestrian and bicycle connectivity with access throughout the site to Leona and Den. Enhanced landscaping is indicated, and providing EV charging stations. So to summarize, brief summary, that's what we're asking for approval on, and I'm happy to answer any questions now or later. We also have our engineer, our civil engineer here. If there's any detailed questions that you'd like to ask regarding the site or stormwater.
Councilmember Toomey.
I have a few questions.
Yes.
Okay. First of all, thank you for redeveloping that building. It's always good when that happens. But why are you demolishing part of it instead of just putting Starbucks in that side?
The, there's, it's kind of a twofold process. One is there weren't a lot of tenants. So for two and a half years, we've been, you know, looking at options for the site and speaking with tenants. There weren't a lot of tenants that wanted to be in that location and in that deep of a building. We were fortunate to work with Planet Fitness for the majority of the building. But by demolishing it, we're also providing parking, you know, enhanced parking for Planet Fitness, but also parking for the rest of the site that allows us to do Starbucks on the front corner and other users.
That's another question I have. So I know this area pretty well.
Yes.
This parking lot has always, if you could have a pet peeve be a parking lot, that would be mine. Is that island, when you first come in off of Leona, going to be removed?
The, when you first come off, in off of Leona, we're actually, I don't know if you can throw that back up. If you, if you look on the west side of the Leona entrance right now, there's a, there's a long curb and actual sidewalk there. So you're exactly right. The way it worked before was you came off on Leona, and you weren't even in the drive aisle. You were kind of in a half-island. Yeah, there were a lot of things with the layout that just didn't work.
Are you going to make Leona, the entrance off of Leona wider?
It's going to be the standard required, you know, two-way entrance of 24 feet.
Is it now, is it 20, it seems like it's very narrow now.
It's hard to know anymore because, you know, there's not the striping and other things going on there, but...
Okay.
It'll be much better, trust me.
It does help me, I'm just thinking, it's a very narrow entrance right now, but it could be because of that. You have to immediately take a right and try not to hit the curb.
Right.
Right, how many times have people done that? And then it seems like it's going to be the internal circulation, the traffic, maybe congested in that area where Starbucks is, and because Caribou is over in the strip mall right next to it. Is there any concern about, because I know the Caribou drive-through people are going to be coming off near the edge of that building. I mean, during peak times, has somebody done a traffic study?
Mayor Kay, City Council, I could maybe address that question. So yes, a traffic study was performed. The city generally takes on that effort. And maximum queuing, they were expecting for the AM peak, which you would probably expect to be the peak time of the day. Queuing of 17 vehicles would be the maximum. So the driveway layout that the applicant has proposed, as you can see up there, actually allows for 18 vehicles to be queued just in the driveway lane. And when you take a look at the total length of driveway space that would be available, they're providing about 340 linear feet of driveway space to accommodate those 18 vehicles. And if you compare that to other Starbucks in Eden Prairie, the one at Terry Pines, which is the most recently approved Starbucks, they provided about 250 feet, so about 90 feet less than what's being provided here. Also up at West 62nd, that Starbucks has about 240 feet of vehicle queuing space. So again, about 100 feet less than the applicant is proposing. And then the Jerry Starbucks provided about 205 feet of linear footage for queuing, which is much less than being proposed. And then the final Starbucks in Eden Prairie is the one at Plaza Drive, that's over by the old Baker Square. That was 145 feet. So those tend to see a little bit of congestion, but based on the traffic analysis, it appears they're providing enough queuing space for the driveway traffic that would come in.
What about Caribou, though? Like, did you guys look at that, at the strip mall in the, in the...
We did. And so our consultant that performed the traffic analysis did a visual observation in the AM peak, and they found that Caribou maximum stacking that they saw actually went from the driveway, where you get your order, and backed up to almost the front of the Qdoba building, so almost along that entire parking area for the cell phone repair, Qdoba, and Caribou Coffee. And that was about 10 to 11 cars that they had witnessed stacking. As compared to here, we're predicting a maximum of 17, so a little bit more traffic. But they do have much more queuing space than, for example, the Caribou does.
Okay.
And at least I would think they would exit one at a time, right? I mean, it's not like 50 cars are trying to get out. It's like you go through the line, one car gets done, and it exits, and it competes with one car. I'm just throwing out it to see what you think, but...
I'm just thinking, see the area right in front of the building?
Yep.
That's, so that's where the people, where the cars will queue for Caribou. And then the people are coming out of Starbucks there. So I'm just concerned that maybe...
They queue along the line of the new Planet Fitness building? No?
Well, the exit, the exit, the exit is right near the strip mall parking. That's all, I mean, I'm just concerned it would...
As long as staff feels it's adequate.
I'm sure that Starbucks would like to be on Flying Cloud Drive, but in an ideal world, they would be on the other side of the parking lot for traffic reasons, that's all.
So we will have a public hearing, and we can ask questions now. And so I'm going to call on you just a minute. Can I just give my one question too, and I'll come right back to you? I just had questions on the future building and parking issues. So if I'm counting right, Planet Fitness, I realize they can use parking in other places, but if you exclude the northeast corner, that's going to be a future building. I'm not sure if they'll require their own parking, whatever. That leaves 32, I think, dedicate, if I counted wrong, plus or minus, 32 dedicated spots for Planet Fitness. I'll go back to Robert in a moment. I'm assuming traffic study and your work also shows that's adequate. And then, I don't know what kind of building goes up in the northeast corner or how large it is, right? And we'll have a chance to weigh in on that someday. But right now, there's 75 spots up there, so let's say you take half of them away. That new entity would then only, would be limited, I would think, to 35 or so spots. So Julie and Robert, do you feel what you envision, what the city envisions going into this site, eventually when the whole thing is built out, there's adequate parking?
Mayor, members of the council, based on the analysis the staff has completed, we think that adequate parking would exist. Of course, any new tenant is going to have to size their building appropriately in order to meet that parking need and take into account the available real estate. But we do think that there certainly is a path forward.
And when we do this kind of approval, not hodgepodge, but in pieces, I'm assuming staff has already, maybe not in paper form, but when a potential tenant comes in, you say, we believe, I'm going to make this up now, but a 10,000 square foot, 15,000 square foot building can go into this site with, I'm making this up, 35 parking spots. I mean, we already have that kind of con, in concept.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Excellent. Did you say, "yes, sir"?
Yes, I did.
I love it. Thank you, ma'am.
My mom might be watching.
You did good. I'm impressed. Do you want to add anything to that, or is that well answered?
That's well versed, you know, from the standpoint of we have a requirement to provide adequate parking for Planet, and as we move forward, we'll work with staff.
We just would be interested as a council in knowing, and of course, we trust our staff. We have amazing staff.
Yeah, they're great.
I never get surprised that you don't already know the answer to whatever I ask. But we, as a council, would just want to know that if we're approving this, again, piecemeal is a bad way to say it, but in sections, that we don't get burned on whatever that next section comes in. It's like, whoa, you guys didn't leave enough room for, but our staff has assured us, we're on to that. Councilmember Freibert.
Well, Mayor, I'm not going to say, "thank you, sir." I got a, I want a clarification on something here. I'm looking at this letter right here and your neighbor. Okay, I just need a clarification. His request of adequate two-way access to and from his center to be maintained throughout the project. I'm familiar with the property quite a bit. I used to go to Office Depot all the time in Caribou. That is kind of a weird deal right there. Is that going to be a problem? I don't know who to address it to, Julie or Robert, as far as two-way traffic there as what he's looking for? Is there somewhere where it kind of works out?
Yeah, Mayor, City Council. So there is an exhibit that was provided by the developer that shows for the two phases of construction that there would be two-way access to the existing building at all times.
So he's addressed it?
It is, and it's part of the Plan B exhibits that will be included in the development agreement that they're abided by and have to follow throughout the duration of the project. So they've demonstrated how they would accommodate that.
Do you want to address Mr. Mueller's second point? Because that's relevant too, I think.
That's what I was going to, that was going to be my second follow-up, leading into the second question. Obviously, you have to have access for trash removal. And it's so dark, if that's, if that's where this trash sits on it, that is awful narrow there, you know, as far as maybe a turn. Are these two questions related?
They are somewhat related. So the second question that he asked is that he wanted direct access out of and into the driveway that the Caribou Coffee uses. So what I will say is that during Phase One construction, they do need to repave that portion of their lot because it needs to be repaved. And there's also a little bit of sewer utility work that needs to be done. While those tasks are being completed, they will be left with a exit only or for their garbage truck that drives the reverse direction down the alley or down the driveway. They would be able to do that, so it wouldn't be 24-foot two-way access like these are...
So while not perfect, there's an accommodation for this.
There is, and we would write into the land alteration permit that the developer only do those tasks of paving and the utility work that impact that ability to provide that direct access out only during the times that they need to do that. So in other words, if the project takes two months to do Phase One, don't close that down for the full two months. Only close that area down when you need to pave it and you need to do your sewer utility work, so...
So this is an expected workout between you.
Okay. I think we can find a good accommodation to meet Mr. Mueller's needs.
Thank you very much.
So let's go, oop, Councilmember Nelson.
Have you considered putting solar panels on the top of these buildings? It doesn't show any at this point.
The, we have not considered it. We kind of deferred to our tenants on that as to whether they would want to go down that road. I think with, I'm not even sure that the current building is really designed to accept them. I'm not, you know, I'm not sure of that. But there was no desire for them to go solar.
You had talked about having bicycles places. Will there be bicycle stands and built-in to the front of the building?
Yes.
Also, are there going to be, you know, so many Eden Prairie buildings have flower pots of one kind or another in front of the buildings or in some kind of placing. Will there be the standard flowers that you find most place else in front of both of these buildings?
I would, I would assume both of them have some type of planting in front of them. I know, obviously, Starbucks does, but we have not gotten to that level of detail, but...
Julie, is that a tenant kind of issue?
Mayor, members of the council, I can actually address a couple of those questions. So the landscaping question first. The landscaping plan does include flowers and flowering shrubs as well. So that is already accommodated in the landscaping plan for both Phase One and Phase Two. With regard to the question about solar, this is the first project, as you heard down in workshop, the first commercial project that the Sustainable Building Standard applies to. the first commercial project that the sustainable building standard applies to. So the Starbucks is triggered for the sustainable building standard, so they will need to meet the new policy, including EV and solar and all of the other requirements related to an existing sustainable policy. The, that does not apply for the Planet Fitness building because it is an existing building.
So we'll have some of it in that development.
Correct.
And I assume the other new building that they haven't figured out what it might be will also fall under those standards.
That is correct.
Thank you.
All right, council, we can continue questions after the public hearing. But my suggestion would be that we open it up to the public and then see if, any responses we get from the audience. And then if not, we'll close the public hearing part and continue our conversation. So this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the city council tonight on the 11609 Leona Road redevelopment project? Seeing none. Council, just because it is our only conversation tonight, why don't we close the public hearing, even if we don't have any more conversation, but I'll give you that opportunity to ask questions or comment? So if I could have a motion, first half of it, then just simply the first eighth of it or six or whatever, close the public hearing.
I'll move to close public hearing.
Sir, second? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. All right, council. I think we got a lot of questions answered there in the other part. Is there anything else that you want to hear from the proponent and/or from our staff? Or are you prepared and ready to vote this evening? Okay. Is there, and you can still, if you think of something, as soon as the motion is made and seconded, you can still say something. So is there someone that would then make the rest of the motion?
I'll adopt a resolution for a planned unit development amendment on 3.44 acres and approve the first reading of the ordinance for a planned unit development district review with waivers on 3.44 acres. And direct staff to prepare a development agreement incorporating staff and commission recommendations and council conditions. And authorize the issuance of an early land alteration permit at the request of the developer, subject to the conditions outlined in the permit. And authorize the issuance of an early wrecking permit at the request of the developer, subject to the conditions outlined in the permit.
Sir, second?
Second.
Okay, council, so any further discussion, conversation, questions, comments that you wish to ask or make? All right, if not, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes 5-0 unanimous. A re-welcome, I guess, of sorts, but certainly welcome to Starbucks and glad to have you reinvesting in our town, so thank you. All right, payment of claims, which again is kind of like our old checkbook or looking at all the expenses that we've incurred since the last time we met. Council, any items you wish to question or learn more about? If not, is there a motion to approve payment of claims?
I'll move for the approval of payment of claims as submitted.
Sir, second? Any discussion? Roll call.
Council member Freiberg? Council member Norrion?
Aye.
Council member Nelson?
Aye.
Council member Toomey?
Aye.
Mayor Case?
Aye. All right. Mr. Getchel, council, anything else to come before the council this evening?
No, one thing to mention, Mayor, I don't. I think we have another council meeting before this, but when we have a little extra time, we always like to plug the community events coming up. And we've got two big ones coming up in October. I know we have another meeting in October, but on the 5th, Saturday, the 5th, is our annual city wide open house. So that's police, fire, city hall, public works, all our departments, 11 to 2. That's a big event. Week, week after that is Harvest to Halloween. That's a big event out at Lake Riley. Kind of combining what used to be the Halloween on the mall with the Harvest Fest we used to do. We get a lot of, a lot of people out at that event, and that'll be on the 12th. That's one to five. So I know we have another council meeting before then, but I thought I'd just share the two fall events, signature fall events for the city. We always get great attendance, and we're excited.
We're not going to do that, the meeting, right now. Okay. Right? All right.
That's all I have.
Well, leave it to council member Toomey to remind me of something that's somewhat of a point of order, mayor's prerogative, chair's prerogative. My wife's birthday today, so happy birthday, Kathy, president of the Eden Prairie Historical Society. I don't know, First Lady of Eden Prairie, is that a little bit obnoxious, I guess, or a little bit? Elegitarian or something, but. No, we're not. All right. With that then, I believe I, we're ready to, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting.
Move to adjourn the city council meeting tonight.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. All right, this meeting is adjourned.